Well, I have six o'clock now, so we'll call the Mayor Board of Alderman Meeting for Tuesday, July the night to order. The first item on the agenda is opening prayer by Jeremy Wilson with Legacy Church. Pastor Jeremy, are you in the crowd? If so, please come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I'll ask Alderman David Reeves to pray. So if you would, please rise for the prayer. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, we just thank you so much for the opportunity to do your business. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to serve. We thank you for wisdom. We ask you for that tonight as we represent the citizens of this great city. Lord, I just pray that we would be mindful that they sent us here, Lord, and we're here to do their business. But, Lord, that we also represent you as well. So I just pray tonight, everything that is done, everything listed, would be represented at you, be done, your word.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, will you read the future meetings into the record, please?
I was trying to move it. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, July 11th at 6:00 p.m., City Beautiful Commission, July 11th at 6:30 p.m., Industrial Development Board meeting has been canceled, Historic Preservation Commission has been canceled, Design Review Commission, July 16th at 6:30 p.m., Board of Zoning Appeals, July 18th at 6:30 p.m.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This time, I'd like to recognize any scouts, if there are any in the crowd. And seeing no scouts in the crowd, we move to the official business of the day. The first item is the approval of the minutes. Madam Clerk, we read item number one.
Minutes of the June 25th, 2024 Board of Mayor and Alderman Regular Meeting.
You've all had time to look over those minutes. If there's any corrections or omissions or errors, please state them at this time. If not, chair to entertain a motion to approve.
I'll see to approve.
Second.
Been properly motioned, been properly seconded. Is any discussion on the minutes? Hearing no discussion on the minutes. Madam Clerk, please present the roll for the Alderman Minutes carry with one abstaining. Now, we move to a public hearing. Individuals will have a maximum of three minutes to speak on either side, for or against, with a total of 20 minutes for each side. Madam Clerk, we read item number one under public hearings.
Ordinance 2408 and ordinance establishing the Bartlett Library Advisory Board.
We open the floor up. For anybody who wished to come speaking in favor, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one coming forward for the public hearing and speaking in favor of ordinance 24-08, those in opposition, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please. Seeing no one wished to come to speak in opposition or in favor, we will adjourn the public hearing on ordinance 24-08. We will now move to unfinished business. Madam Clerk, we read item number two under unfinished business.
Third reading of ordinance 2408 and ordinance establishing the Bartlett Library Advisory Board.
Second.
Been properly motioned, seconded. Is any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Ordinance 24-08 carries. Yes, we now move to the consent agenda. There's six items on the consent agenda. On a note, the public, our planning commission report is simply an acknowledgement of the report, not a vote for any PC item. Any member of the board may remove any item for separate discussion if they wish. Does any member of the board wish to remove any single item for separate discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you read the consent agenda, starting with item number one into the roll, please?
Authorization to auction surplus property. Item two, Tyler Technologies Cloud-Based Solution Utilization Agreement. Item three, bids for water treatment plant chemicals for fiscal year 2025. Item four, purchase a Chevrolet Tahoe Police Sport Utility Vehicle. Number five, subdivision contract for Herd Subdivision. Number six, planning commission report for July 2024.
Been properly motioned and seconded. Madam Clerk, we present the roll. There we go. Thank you. Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Now, we move to the five items under new business. Madam Clerk-
Mayor, I think just for the minutes, next week, we just need to make sure the motion to be the second, unless Brad is the motion to get it as the second.
Thank you, Alderman Reeves. Sheriff, Ms. Clerk, you got that correction?
Yep.
Everybody says it at one time, and it's hard to decide who said it. But, thank you. Let's see, we was under new business. There's five items. Madam Clerk, read item number one.
Appoint members to Bartlett Library Advisory Board.
Represent to you the new members or the members of the Bartlett Library Advisory Board. I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Felicia Knox, who is the library director. Please stand. And Ms. Felicia, if you just mind coming down front, and as I call your name, if you'll stand here after we get the motion to approve, we'll get a group picture with the new board. Many of you don't know, but each one of the Alderman was able to submit a name, and those names submitted was the first name is, and I'm sorry, Melanie Cummins, Carol Huff, and Nicole Travis couldn't be here. There may be others here that I didn't know, but I knew for sure that they couldn't be here. So if you hear, is Ms. Tori Arthur here? Ms. Tori, will you mind coming down front? Stephanie Beach? Stephanie couldn't be here also. How about Lynn Chambers? And Mikiya Miller? Roger Murphy? Roger Murphy? He's not here. I think Nicole Travis wasn't here. So if y'all just kind of squished together. Todd, can we get a picture of, they may want to get another picture when everybody's here, but at least we'll have one that was here We would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Properly motioned. Is any discussion? And we'd just like to say, thank y'all for your willingness to volunteer and serve in our community. We do appreciate it. And we're very excited, Ms. Felicia, for what store is in hold for our library. We've been open a week now, a week and a half, a week and a half, and hearing good things. So, folks, avail yourself to the old library under new management. So now, we will move to item number two. Madam Clerk.
Resolution 2324, a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2025 general fund budget to appropriate $3,000 for qualified law enforcement officers funded by the State of Tennessee Recruitment and Retention Grant Program.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Dick Phibis, Director of Finance, has an explanation for us.
The police department has received a grant from Tennessee Recruitment and Retention Grant Program for $3,000. This needs to be received by the city and appropriated for that purpose.
Place the roll, please. Madam Clerk, for Resolution 2324. Resolution 23-24 passes unanimous. Madam Clerk, read item number three, please.
Resolution 2424, a resolution to write off bad checks over three years old or deemed uncollectible issued to the city of Bartlett.
Mr. Dick Phibis, Director of Finance.
We have a habit, really, we need to write off bad checks that are three years or older. These checks are two checks that need to write off, and both of them, at the time, were aggressively tried to collect, but we've not been able to do that. So we need to write these off.
Motion?
Second.
And second, that was Alderman Reeves made the motion, and Vice Mayor Jack Young made the second. Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, please, is any discussion? If not, please go to the vice, cast your vote. Resolution 2424 passes unanimous. Madam Clerk, read item number five, I mean, four, excuse me.
Resolution 2524, a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2024 budget Bartlett City Schools General Purpose School Fund, Federal Projects Fund, Discretionary Grant Fund, and Education Capital Project Fund.
Mr. Dick Phibis, Director of Finance.
This comes from the city school system. Much of it is true expenditures during the year. They also have an amendment, $155,000 for their Educational Capital Project Fund to provide roof repairs at Bond Lynn and ADA compliance at Adlindale Elementary.
Move, we approve?
Second.
Been properly motioned by Vice Mayor Jack Young, and second was Alderman Kevin. Yes, okay, good. Make sure we got that correct. Any discussion on Resolution 2524? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk? We getting Johnny on the spot there, aren't we? Resolution 2524 carries unanimous. Madam Clerk, read item number five.
Resolution 2624, a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2025 grants fund budget to recognize AKC reunite adopt a K-9 cop grant to the Bartlett Police Department for acquisition of a K-9 unit.
Mr. Dick Phibis.
We received a grant from the reunite adopt K-9 cop grant for $7,500. We've pledged additional $2,500 out of the police department budget for the purpose of acquiring a new employee for the police department.
Maybe it'd be as famous as Gus. So, most entertain?
Move, we approve.
Been properly motioned. Who did the second?
Second.
You get that, Madam Clerk?
I didn't.
But, all right, any discussion? Hearing none?
I have one question.
Yes.
Deputy Chief Golden, do we know which officer is going to receive this K-9? Is this going to go to Officer Schaumberg, who just had his-
I would venture to say it will go to Officer Schaumberg, yes, assuming he would like to have another K-9.
Okay.
Most don't know, but his K-9 partner passed away recently, so after 10-plus years of service. So this will help us start the process to replace that K-9.
Right, thank you.
Sound like you'd be in good hands. So is that all the discussion? Madam Clerk? Resolution 2624. So at this time, as many of you know, we made a transition with the Y at the REC Center, and the board availed herself to some of the renovations that are going on over there. And I'll ask Mr. Brian with the YMCA to come forward and share some of those with the general public, please. He's got it memorized if we can't get the video.
Somebody's doing it for me.
Here we go.
Thank you.
One of them anyway, here we go.
There we go. Okay, perfect. Mayor and Board of Alderman, thank you. As you know, we've transitioned now. So we started in April to where we are today. And so, we've really spent the last two months transitioning the center over to the Y. We're happy to report, there have been some bumps in the road with every transition, but really, this is one of the best transitions that we've had so far. We've sold over 500 new members have joined the Y, which is more than the REC Center sold all of last year. Our summer camps, we have 295 kids that are enrolled in summer camp, and there is a wait list currently for all weeks of summer except for the Fourth of July. So there is a packet that you have that has kind of all the stats and the breakdown of those stats. But, you know, when we decided to do this transition in partnership with the city, one of the promises that the Y came along and said is, hey, listen, we're going to make sure to provide new equipment. When we really got into that, initially, we thought we would be replacing the equipment. But we are now, pretty much have done a full assessment of the facility, and we're going to touch almost every area of that facility to give it an upgrade, a new feel, a new look for the residents. And so, the only thing that we're not going to be touching as part of this is the locker room and the pool. But part of that is the long-term plan, to do the outdoor experience, the pool and the locker room. So all that will be touched in Phase Two. So today, what I really wanted to kind of show you and walk you through really quickly is the Phase One of the project. This right here is what you're currently seeing is the current floor plan of the center. And if we go to the second slide here, you'll see the proposed floor plan. So the first thing that we're going to do walking into the lobby is really transform that lobby. So when you walk in, it's a real welcoming experience. It feels good. The front desk right now has a very low ceiling. We'll actually bust that out, change the lighting, and really lighten and open up the center. That's your first impression when you walk in. And then, from there, you should see activity going really in all four corners of the lobby. To the left there is our new Group X studio. Currently, those are conference rooms and offices. We're going to make that a new studio that will host the spin room as well as the mind-body room. Currently, the spin is in an open area, so we're going to actually put that in its own dedicated space and give us another group exercise class. We'll paint all the hallways there, and when you go to the gym, we're actually going to completely sand and resurface the gym floor. It'll look like a completely new gym floor. That floor has not been sanded in a very long time. It's been screened. That will allow us to add new pickleball courts in there and new lines to really make the gym more multipurpose for a full experience of that gym in full use. When you walk all the way down the hallway to the multipurpose room, that room will get new flooring. It'll get dimmable lighting. It'll also have the ability to turn into another Group X space. One of the ways that we drive membership is really through Group X. So the idea is, how many Group X spaces can we actually create in the facility? And we have a small window, morning before work and night after work. And so, we really need to run as many classes as we can, and this will allow us to do that in that multipurpose room. But we're actually preparing that multipurpose room for the future to be the birthday party, our true multipurpose room with that kitchen off to the side. When the outdoor experience comes, that really will be the place where you can have your indoor party, and you can go right out to the pool, the splash pad, have fun with the kids. If you come back down the hallway, you'll see right there, it says Power 40. Currently, there are two racquetball courts in that place, in that space, and we're going to actually cut, it looks like a double garage door out of it, but there won't be a door to it. That'll connect those two spaces and really allow us to offer Power 40 concept, which it doesn't look like a racquetball court. It'll look like boutique kind of fitness studio there that we can use for personal training, group exercise classes, and the Power 40 class, which is actually our number one group exercise class in our whole association. It outperforms any other class that we have. We piloted that at one of our locations. And so, Bartlett will be the second location to get that Power 40 concept. And then, when you come down to the cardio room, we are actually, there's a weird little wall there right now. We're taking that wall out. We're changing the orientation of all of the cardio equipment to look out the window, not out the wall. And so, we'll be adding new pieces of cardio in there. We'll be, we did do a member survey and understood, hey, this is what members say that they need. So we've added equipment that we needed. We've also added different pieces that are in there now, more arc trainers, new steps, things like that in there. And we'll redesign that space so that we'll have a centralized fan in there to give more of an airflow, a better experience, new speakers and everything in there. And then, we walk through to the childcare area where that, currently, that childcare space is about half of that size. One of the things in the member survey that came back, the number three want out of all the members was more children and more activities. So we made childcare free for members, so they don't have to pay for it anymore. And we're opening up that space, doubling that size. So we'll be able to actually serve kids all the way from six weeks all the way to 12 years. So that room will be divided into three areas. One is our non-walkers, so infants, then our waddlers, and then our walkers, and then our older kids. And the childcare check-in will actually transition to the far side, where we actually create almost a childcare lobby there, so that when we get congestion there, that parents don't feel congested. We can easily check kids in and out. And we've put in safety barriers where there's a two-barrier safety. So if a kid gets through one door, the next door stops them. If you've been in there, kids are running, you know, running to their parents. Well, one parent opens the door and three kids run out. Well, there's a second door to stop them so that the staff can actually get the right kids to the right parents. And then, when you go to the weight room, the weight room will get all completely brand-new equipment in there. There are a few pieces that will stay, but, you know, 98% of that equipment will be completely brand-new in there. We'll repaint that room. We'll, if you go through the other side, there is the, on the other side of the weight room, is the Group X space. All that will get new equipment. So all brand-new Les Mill equipment, some more Tiara expands in there. So all of those spaces in that floor will look completely different. And then, if you go to the top floor, so that's over to the right over there, the track will stay, the track, although we'll put a turf area in for functional fitness up on that second floor there, where we can have sleds and things that the members requested. And then, where the spin studio is in that upstairs lobby, we'll actually transform that area into an active, healthy adult space. So we've created another workout space. So those are the changes. We think that the total project cost is actually, when it's all said and done, is going to come to about $1 million that we'll invest into the facility. And part of that member survey, essentially, everybody who answered the survey, we compiled those results, and we said, any time that there was something mentioned two or more times, then we essentially put that to the top of the list. There were 28 items on that list that were mentioned two or more times, and we're addressing 25 of them. So only three of them did not get addressed, and those are actually getting addressed through some rearrangement of equipment and things like that. So I really think that the members and the residents will be really happy by the time that we're completely done with the project. The plan is that construction will begin in August, and that will be completed by January. In the meantime, we are putting all of the operations of the center essentially into the gym and into the multipurpose room. And we will have a real strong communication plan to get through there. And once we get through this transition on the other side of it, I think everybody will be really happy, and we'll have a grand reopening.
So, thank you. I know it's difficult to remain open and to make a remodel job. So if you've ever been through those, so just please bear with us for the next few months, starting in August. Did Alderman Reeves, you have something you'd like to say?
Yeah, sorry, I was, I came in late, had a four-hour meeting on my schedule this afternoon. So, you know. But, a question about the weight room.
Sure.
Was any of the feedback that you got from the citizens about the size and functionality of the weight room? The only reason I'm asking is because I'm kind of, you know, I'm wondering, kind of wondering why you didn't just bust out that wall and then just have it be one huge weight room? Are you guys reorienting the weight room? What'd you get on the weight room?
So, feedback was, that was in our top five of feedback, that the weight room needed to be expanded. One thing to note about the weight room is, it's bigger than any of the other Y's that we have right now. So this is one of the biggest weight rooms that we actually have in this system. But we brought in the equipment people and consultants and said, hey, what's wrong with the weight room? Well, right now, it is, we believe that it's truly the layout of the weight room, and we've got too much equipment in there and too small of a space, and it feels really packed. So with our plan, what we've basically done is kind of spread the equipment out, and we've created the upstairs area, which will move some of that equipment out of there. And then, we've reduced kind of the footprint of the equipment. You know, the newer equipment actually takes a smaller footprint now. And so, and the third thing is really the orientation. When you look at the weight room, it should go from low profile to high profile. Right now, it's kind of jumbled, so the perception is that the weight room is actually smaller than it is. So we think that by changing the orientation and putting a couple of these things in place, that it'll fix that. But we're going to keep our ears to the ground and make sure that we address that. But if you look at all of our other centers now, this will be the biggest center with the most equipment in it, and I think it'll feel fine by the end of it.
I just, I just remember when we were younger, and we would, we were members of the, I came out of Bartlett, and of course, we lifted weights a lot. We would go there, it'd be like, place would be packed all the time, I mean, in the weight room. Now, maybe over the years, that's changed quite a bit.
Yeah.
But my experience was very much, I want to go in and work. I don't want to be there for two hours, right?
Yeah.
Waiting on equipment. So I was just wondering if, you know, if that trend has changed, where less people are going and hitting the weights, and they're using the other amenities, or it's still, you know, it's still one of those things that's really popular at the Y to go to the weight room, so.
Yeah, the weight room is still pretty popular. But, and the trend is actually moving from cardio to weights, but it's actually moving to functional fitness weights. So by using the functional fitness area on the second floor, we created another workout space. The racquetball courts create another workout space. The secondary active healthy adults creates another workout space. And then, you have your two traditional rooms that were already there.
So, and so, the room on the other side of the weight room is going to be like a stretching room? Is there going to be classes in there as well?
There will be classes, and that is another Group X space.
Oh, it's a Group X space.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, it just wasn't labeled, so it kind of, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Very informational. Thank you. I just ask that the public and those members now, just bear with us over the next couple of months, and come the first of the year, things ought to be better. So we move to open the discussion up. If anybody, any board member have anything they would wish to share with the general public? Alderman Quinn?
Just like to say, thank you to everybody who put on a great July 4th fireworks. Yes, Debbie, and Todd, and police, and fire, and parks, and public works, and BPAC, and I hope I didn't leave somebody out. But thank y'all for all your hard work. It was a great event. Whoever prayed for rain and a little cooler weather, thank you to that person, too. So, thank you.
Yeah. Any, Alderman Reeves?
Same thing on Bartlett Live. I know that's a heavy lift as well. Appreciate it. The past Saturday was really awesome. Awesome weather, awesome group. Looking, and it actually had more people. So it seems like it's catching on, but a great job. Really appreciate all the work going on there. Another thing I was going to throw out there, I know the city today posted a picture of Macklemore's getting a facelift finally, and so it's looking a lot better. But one of the things I mentioned to Todd, too, if you go to the right of Macklemore's, Bank of Bartlett just finished a huge renovation. And then, just to the right of that, the Los Polares building has been totally repainted as well. So it looks like Zaxby's is, you know, making everybody step up their game down there, you know. Another thing I would say is, great job to Code Enforcement on Shelby Street and down in Ferguson. That whole thing has gotten cleaned up. It's nice down there. It's getting a lot better. So thank you for the hard work down there as well.
Good. And I'll ask Debbie and Todd if they want to come forward, and maybe Todd to have an update on Zaxby's, the way they're going around there. We'll be having chicken sandwiches here for a long.
We appreciate the segue.
Yeah.
It's you.
That's me? Okay. Well, first of all, thanks to everyone who came out and bared that hot, hot heat on July the 3rd. But we survived it. It was a great event. I think it was a record crowd at that event. But we're not stopping there. We had Saturday Night Live music, and now this Friday, we have Food Truck Friday again. So we're going to have everything from tacos to ice cream, fries, and lots more. I think this, yeah, on the screens, everything. So we'll see you all Friday at the- So we'll see you all Friday at the park, and then Todd's going to tell you about our next Bartlett Live.
So the Bartlett Live music series is an absolute hit. We have had two under our belts, Marion Benberg, Ashton Riker put on an amazing show, Elevation Memphis blew everybody away, and Nick Black, I mean, that dude can work a crowd. So our third coming up is July the 20th, Jerief Green is going to open up for Chinese Connection Dub Embassy. If you don't know who they are, check them out on YouTube, you guys will like them, it's going to be an amazing show. The weather was awesome last week, so let's hope it's just as good on the 20th. Come on out, food trucks, Grind City's there, bring the kids, bring the dog, I even bought some hula hoops because all the kids were dancing, so come on out and spend the evening with us. Have a good time. And it's free.
Thank you. Okay. Any other director have anything they'd like to add? Seeing no other director wish to come forward, if a citizen completed the open discussion citizens forum prior to the start of the meeting, they may come forward, state the name and address for the record. You'll have up to three minutes, at which time a buzzer will sound, then you must sit down. We'll have a total time limit of open discussions, period, 20 minutes. So anybody who wished to be recognized at this time, please come to the microphone. Got your backup?
Good afternoon, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Clarence Neal, and this is my wife, Aleen Neal. We're residents of Bartlett. We've been in Bartlett for 39 years and 10 months. That might soon change. Let me tell you why we're here. Two years ago, we had some neighbors to move in from Mississippi. I don't have anything against Mississippi residents, but these people are just like the Beverly Hillbillies. They cook, they have a food truck trailer that they park in the front yard, and they cook stuff in it, carnival food. They render lard, if you ever watched the Beverly Hillbillies. They cook pork skin, they cook pork rinds, they cook popcorn. We have gone to code enforcement several times, and code enforcement has been out to talk to them about that. But Friday afternoon, all day Saturday and all day Sunday, the same thing happens over and over and over again. Mark Twain said, "A good fence makes a good neighbor." I put up a really, really nice fence, and now they're complaining to code enforcement about my fence. It's a 48-panel fence, it starts at six feet, goes to eight feet, and the back of it is 10 feet, but the food truck is 12 feet high. I'm tired of looking at this food truck. Every day, this lady here tells me, "We need to move. We need to move." I don't want to move. Commercial appeal, last week, in the U.S. Census says Bartlett is losing residents. I see why Bartlett is losing residents. We've been here a long time, we go to church here, I had a business here, my boys went to school here, and we need help with this. All of us get phone calls, "Do you want to sell your house?" No, click. "Do you want to sell your house?" No, click. Today, I got a phone call, "Do you want to sell your house?" It wasn't a no click. I'm thinking about it. We need help. I've got photographs here, a stack of photographs. As a freelance photographer over the years, I've taken photographs of this. I've got photographs, I hope my timing's not, when they brought a grease trap to cook stuff, I called code enforcement to tell them, "They're putting a grease trap." Code enforcement came out, but they still kept the grease trap. I've talked to Health Department, they talked to them, "Well, they can cook carnival food." We're here, this is the last straw. We don't know what else to do, but I'm tired of living and seeing this every day. So that's why we're here today, to talk to the Bartlett City, Bartlett Aldermen, and everybody, to see if we can get some kind of help with this.
Yes, sir. The, ma'am, did you want to say anything?
I'm ready to go. I just want to.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. So tomorrow, ma'am, was you wanting to speak?
I just wanted to raise.
Yes, ma'am.
Article six.
Ma'am, come up to the microphone, please.
First of all, I've lived two blocks down from Clarence, I've been there 40 years. I love my neighborhood. And we are starting to see some things. I pick up trash every week, I walk through my neighborhood, and then sometimes I come to code enforcement and talk to them, and they have always been awesome. We've got the best code enforcement. They listen, they tell me sometimes why, what I'm complaining about, "Sorry," like there was a car parked. No, they can't. Okay, that's fine. But what Clarence is dealing with, you ought to see his pictures, and it is bad. Article six, section 10, parking and storage of certain vehicles. Trailers not stored in an enclosed building must be stored behind the front elevation of the house, and that's all I'm going to say.
So, ma'am, is that all you wish to say? So I'm sure when you fill out the request, there's a contact, we've got a contact, I'm sure, for y'all. The, I'll split these up. The, just flip-flop those. I'll reach out to you tomorrow, and we'll set some, I think it was enough heads in the room, we get, we get all the story together and see what we can do to help y'all.
It'll be cheaper than having to move.
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm. Anyone else wish to come forward at this time? The, nobody else wishing to come forward, is there a motion to adjourn? Hey, give them just a few minutes to look over those pictures, you want these pictures back?
I have ten.
Okay, good, thank you. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Second. This concludes the meeting for, the board meeting for Tuesday, July the 9th. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.